Two thousand seventeen, series A.
Series A. So I believe that the motion would be to authorize the district administration, district solicitor and bond counsel and financial consultant to explore the refinancing of the series twenty seven, two thousand seventeen general obligation bond, series A.
Yes, Scott Matts, did you get all that?
Scott Matts is finally here, sorry.
All right, I wrote, I wrote down to the point of saying restructuring and two thousand seventeen A, I don't know if it was necessary.
See, two thousand seventeen general obligation bond, series A. That's, that's accurate, Kathleen?
Yes, it's the GLB, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so when I say it, when it's time to get a motion and I say it wrong, hopefully Mr. Subers is still here to tell me what I did wrong.
We, we will get that, we will make sure that the wording is correct when the motion is made, thanks.
Perfect. Any other agenda edits that we need to address by the board or by Dr. Cooper or Ms. Haynes? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Three A, one through ten.
I'll make that motion that we.
Okay.
Approved, three A, one through ten.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Miller, any, any discussion on those items before we vote?
Can we take number four and vote on that separately, or is that not possible?
It is definitely possible. Can I, can, would Mr. Strobel, would you be okay to?
I'd be happy.
To change your.
I'd be happy to rescind my, my, um.
Would you be able to make them, make a motion for one through ten?
Excluding four. I'll make that motion, I'd like to make a motion that we approved three, one through ten excluding number four.
And Mr. Miller, would you be okay with amending your motion as far, as, as we just said?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do we have any, any discussion on those nine items?
And just for clarification, is three A, one through, three A, ten, with the exception of three A, four?
Correct. If there's no discussion by board members on that, we can go ahead and have a vote. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Okay, six yeses, right, seven? No, six. I'll shut up.
All right, okay, so we can go ahead and do number four, and then I believe I have forgotten something that we have to go back and do, that's okay. But we'll, I'll apologize to that person when we get there. So, three A, four, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion that we.
I'll move.
Three, four.
Okay, that motion again is for Mr. Strobel and seconded by Mr. Miller. Ms. Leoni, I believe that you had some, had some unresolved questions you want to dealt with?
Yeah, and I, I got some of the information, but I don't have all of it, so that's why I wanted to vote on it separately.
Okay. So, did you have questions for administration?
Well, I basically just wanted to know the cost perspective per student at a regular Daniel Boone school, like the schools, the high school, stuff like that, compared to what we're paying to the charter schools. So I wasn't able to get all that information, so that was basically my main question. Just the cost per student.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I, I don't know if, I know I don't have that answer, so.
Kathleen, do you have a ballpark? Kathleen Haynes, do you have a ballpark?
Yes, and that's what I already sent her, I told her, what I had sent to her was the charter, what we break down with special ed versus regular ed, and then they have an average per student is like fourteen thousand, so it's, I've not, to break it down by elementary versus secondary and all that ins and outs, it's going to take me a little bit more time to get that information.
It's just hard to vote on something when I don't have all of the information, because I don't want to make the wrong decision, and I want to be very transparent on what I'm seeing before I vote on something.
And, and as estimate figures, it's about twelve thousand for regular ed student, twenty five for special education student.
In our school district or statewide?
That's what we typically.
In our school.
To a charter school.
Okay.
So then can I ask a question?
Of course.
Right, so I guess then I'm confused at why we're feeling that we're paying the charter schools too much, when it's actually less than what we use per student in our schools.
The cost to educate a student on a charter basis is far less than what we're actually paying them, because they don't have the brick and mortar that we have.
Ms. Leoni, one of the issues is that with respect to cyber schools and cyber charter schools in particular, that the cost that the district, the charge, tuition that the district is charged is significantly higher than the actual cost to educate that child at a charter school. And that the, you know, there's a movement that those costs, that the tuition charge to a school district be more closely aligned to the actual cost incurred by the charter school in providing that education. That's one of the issues.
Jennifer, I don't know if you know this or not, but would you know what the average cost is to a person paying the tuition at that, at the charter schools?
I don't, no.
I don't have that information.
And I don't like the fact that the information that was, like, the, the letter that we were given was kind of a lump sum of everybody in Pennsylvania, I think it should be per, but I, I just, I think that it should be school choice, and if those kids would like to go there, I know a lot of kids would go there, go there for smaller class sizes and things like that, more specialized, and I, but that's just on me.
Yeah, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the resolution is for the, all the schools in the state, it's not an individual resolution for each school.
Right. Yeah, and it, you're right, it's, it's not, it hasn't been tailored by us, but it hasn't been tailored by anybody else that I know of that.
Right.
Is voting on it this month.
No, it's just a resolution to try to take care of some of the inequity in the charter school system.
Yeah, and if it helps to better understand that this isn't going against charter schools or what the reason for them, our parents have that choice, that's not what this is about, this is about, we used to get funding from the state about this, we used to get more money, now we're being charged all this money, and we're not getting any money for it, and it's more money than what it costs to educate them through those charter schools. This is just strictly on the dollar that we're being charged as a district, the expense line that we have going forward.
Did you have any other questions, Ms. Leoni?
No.
Did any other board members have any other questions on this, this item? I, I think that we can go ahead and, everybody vote, vote their conscience, and we can have a vote on that item. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
No.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, five to one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Now we'll get to the part where I forgot something kind of important. So, two, two meetings ago, the board voted to accept the resignation of a board member, Mr. Murray, and we posted the, for anyone in region two who is interested in the position, and someone is interested, I know she's on the, she's, she's on the call with everybody else, I apologize, Ms. Tanya, Tanya Bell is the person that put in a letter of interest, and we are going to, I actually, I didn't know if what we wanted to do was if Mr., Dr. Cooper wanted to read her letter of interest, or if we want to just let her say a few words about herself, how do you feel about that, Ms. Dr. Cooper?
I would let Ms. Bell speak to the letter that she had shared with, with me and with the board.
Yeah, you don't have to go on forever, Ms. Bell, just a little bit about yourself and how long you've lived in the district and why you're interested in joining, joining this, this, this awesome family that we have here on the board. Ms. Bell, are you unmuted, I hope?
Okay, I'm unmuted.
There we are.
Hello, good evening. I wrote, because I was interested, I have three children in the district, live in Union Township, I have one child attending the high school, I have one attending the intermediate center, and my youngest will be starting kindergarten in the fall. I've lived in the district since two thousand four, I graduated from our neighbor, Twin Valley High School, and I have a Bachelor of Science from Pennsylvania State University in Management, I work as a risk management consultant for the last twenty years, and I feel like I can contribute to the community, and I've been interested in the board for several years, attending meetings as often as possible.
Yeah, and I've seen you here since, since I've been on the board, but I've also seen you out in the audience when I was a member of the audience, so I know you, you've been around for a while. Do any of the board members have any question from, from Ms. Bell? Okay, so if, if we have no questions, do we have someone who will be willing to make a motion to vote for, I don't know how to word this exactly, Mr. Subers can correct me, for Ms. Bell to be named to the vacant position for school board, region two, for a period of, I believe, two years?
If I may, I would propose that the motion be to appoint Ms. Bell to fill the existing vacancy in region two until the first Monday of December, following the next municipal election pursuant to section three dash three fifteen of the school code.
Yeah, that sounds a lot more specific than what I said. Is anybody willing to make that motion?
I do, I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I think Bucky should have to repeat that, though.
I need to make sure that Ms. Albright hears me. I'm making the motion for you, Tanya Bell, excited to have you.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Oh, that was reluctant.
Things are, things are degenerating quickly, I'm sorry. So, so if, does anyone have any other comments from the board before we vote on, on Ms. Bell?
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Was this, this item wasn't on the published agenda?
No, it's my fault that it wasn't.
I think what we, we could, would be appropriate is to ask if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on this board action item, to raise a hand in the Zoom meeting, and then we'll ask Mr. Matts if anybody has requested the opportunity to comment on this action item.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Subers. As, as Mr. Subers mentioned, we're doing this slightly out of order, so if anyone does have any comments about this possible addition to the board of Ms. Bell, you can go ahead and raise your hand, and Mr. Matts will let me know. And, Mr. Matts?
No hands raised.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
No, yeah, no problem. So are we prepared to vote?
Now, Julia, are we going to swear in tonight?
We, we will talk about that after, after, after we vote.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Okay, Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Stro, Mr. Strobel, oops, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome aboard, Ms. Bell. So that, the questions that I was asked about whether or not you'd be sworn in tonight, Dr. Cooper and Mr. Subers are solicitor, we're supposed to confer to see if that is something we can do virtually.
Yeah, this is Brian Subers, I would, I find that it could be, the oath can be administered virtually, there's been a recent amendment pursuant to, I believe, the CARES Act, or in relation to the CARES Act and the COVID nineteen emergency disaster regarding virtual notaries, I would suggest that we, that Ms. Haynes administer the oath, and then I follow up separately with Ms. Haynes regarding execution of the certificate regarding the administration of the oath pursuant to the Uniform Law and Notorial Acts. So, long story short, Ms. Haynes, I'd ask you to administer the oath.
Okay, Ms. Bell, you'll just have to, Ms. Bell, you'll have to repeat after me, are you ready?
Okay.
Say, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
There you go.
Yay!
Thank you, welcome.
And.
Congratulations and welcome.
And. And Mr. Subers, she is able to take part in any votes from here forward in this meeting, correct? Yes?
I'm sorry, I had my cell phone moved, yes.
Someone's always got to do it, and so, all right, so let me just say to Ms. Bell, if there's anything that you feel like you want to ask extra questions about, go, go ahead, and we'll answer if we can, if there's anything that you feel you're not well versed enough, you can always abstain, and that's fine with me, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, let me get back to where we were. So we were, we were at personnel consent items, so it was four, A, one, one and two. Do I have a motion for those?
I'll make the motion that we pass four A, one and two.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on those? If we have no discussion, we can have a, we can go ahead and have a vote. Mr. Scott?
Yes, Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Tanya Bell, Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Seven, yeses?
Nice to have seven again, at least we're, we're almost to full strength. So, next item is five, A through, A, one through four, as amended. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll give you a motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it just to.
I'll second it.
No, that's fine.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller?
Okay.
And do we have any discussion on, on the consent items? The, I, I mentioned to Mr. Cooper, Dr. Cooper, in the interval between the hearing and the meeting, that we were supposed to be making some of the info that was discussed in the hearing public, I don't know if it's going to be shared, like, the contract, I don't know how that works, if we'll be, are we sharing the contract proposal before we vote on it?
Kathleen, do you have, do you have access to that?
Yeah, I have the contract up on my screen, what information do you need?
I'm. You're in the savings.
Actually, we really haven't seen the contract.
Yeah, and so I just assumed, I understood that we couldn't, until the hearing occurred, we weren't going to share it on the agenda, but I feel like it should be shared before.
Could that be screen shared, Ms. Haynes?
Scott, that would be you.
The, the one thing I would note is that, as discussed previously, the contract needs to be finalized pursuant to further negotiation, and I think what, and the RFP has been public, and this, the contract, the, the document I think Mr. Scott's can make available is a proposed contract received from the vendor, but the, the costing is in Exhibit A, so I think Exhibit A would be the most relevant document, it has the, the pricing being proposed by Nimble, and I would just say that the contract that they submitted is subject to further review and negotiation, and, and that the, the contract that will be negotiated will be based upon the district's RFP, request for proposals.
So there will be another, what I, may I ask, for clarification, will the contract come back to the board for approval at a later date, like the final contract?
Well, pursuant to the present motion, no, you, you can change the motion to directing the district administration and, and district solicitor to finalize the contract for, for future board approval. Kathleen, I don't know if there's a timing issue, if the, if the final approval of the contract with Nimble can wait until the next business meeting of the, next board meeting, business meeting?
I think it's not a matter of timing for the contract, we sent this, I sent the contract over to you, it's all based on the RFP, there's nothing different than what we've done with other RFPs. The, the matter is, is that I need an approval to inform the employees to be able to give them enough time, I don't want to prolong this and let them, they need to be given time to do what they need to do.
Now, I, I guess I understand, I understand that, that, that timing issue.
The contract's going to match the RFP, is that correct, Brian?
Yes, it will be pursuant to the RFP.
Does it make sense then, Julia, if we shared the cost per year and then the savings, the overall savings, and then the contract matches the RFP, which we had a chance to look at, we could.
Right, because we approved the RFP that went out, right?
Correct, that's what I'm saying, so it's going to match that, so we could certainly vote on that, get that done for Kathleen tonight, so that it gives them time, but I do think it's appropriate to share the annual fees, costs, and then the annual savings, that's.
Right, right, and I know we, I know we shared it verbally in the, in the hearing.
Okay, the annual cost of the contract, the first year being three hundred forty-nine thousand, second being three hundred sixty-six thousand, third year being three hundred eighty-one thousand, total cost of the three-year contract is one million ninety-six thousand dollars. The savings to the district is about sixteen thousand, the first year, seventy-three thousand, the second year, and the third year being seventy-four thousand, with a total savings of a hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars over a three-year period.
Does, does anybody on the board wish for any more granular discussion on the monetary portion of this?
I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if it's on the monetary.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay, Ms. Albright?
I mean, I, I don't know, I kind of feel like, I don't know, I must live in a cave or something, I mean, how many people are we talking here, how many people are we eliminating with this?
We have a total of two positions.
How many?
Two.
And the one thing I would note in that regard, if Nimble were hiring new people to fill the, fill those positions under the school code and under, under RFP, they're required to consider, not necessarily hire, but they're required to consider the existing employees and, and give them an interview.
Right.
Correct.
I saw that in the RFP, yeah.
But they're not required to hire them.
No, they are not required to hire them.
I assume they're not hiring new people for this, but they have people?
That I don't know.
They are, they are, are they still here, are the, is the gentleman from Nimble still listening in on the call?
I do know Mr. Hawes dropped off, but I do have an idea of that question.
Yeah, taking it, yeah, taking it into account that you're not him, you know, if you have any insight.
Yeah, correct, so, you know, our two positions would be eliminated as district employees, however, we'd be staffing with four, so there would be additional hiring, because we'd be increasing our staffing levels as necessary, whether that's internal to his, his organization or he hires additional individuals, but I do know the, the number being replaced is higher than currently on staff.
But there's no guarantee that they'll, that those two that are being cut would be hired.
Correct, I do not know if they will seek employment with that, with Nimble, or really how that'll play out at this point.
So Scott, just for, for clarification, the, the savings are. So, Scott, just for, for clarification, the, the savings are $16,000, $70,000, and $70,000, but we're getting additional, actually getting more technology services in addition to those savings?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So are we getting like two more FTEs, or what additional services are we getting?
There'd be two more FTEs.
Okay. That sounds a lot better. I was a little concerned about the, the savings being kind of low on the light side, but that makes more sense.
Do we know also if they do hire the people that are already here, are those benefits, are they, are they going to roll over with them? Like their medical benefits and things like that, since they're not really, I mean, they're moving companies, but?
No, they, they would be subject to whatever Nimble offers their employees. They're, they're not going to be entitled to the benefits under their, you know, existing contractual arrangements with the district.
Okay, are there any other board, board questions or clarifications?
I just have one, because I tried to get it without, but Scott, I'm just making sure you're staying with us, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I am here.
No one said that yet.
I did, I did have one more thing to mention, that if we move forward, if we move forward tonight, is that they did put a six-month out, so it's a three-year contract, but he stood up and said, at any given time, so, you know, they're, it, I think they're willing to, you know, do what they need to do to make it work in the contract. It's going to match the RFP, so just to add some more comfort that we can move forward with this this evening.
Okay. Any, any other comments by board members, that they, questions they wanted answered before we vote as it stands? So, Mr. Scott, if we could vote on, uh, where, where am I? All, all the finance consent items, 5A, 1 through 4, as I meant.
Sorry, 5A, 1 through 4. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right, seven yeses.
Okay. Do I have a motion for, whatever's next, 7A, 1?
I think 6, right?
6, 1 and 2. I'll make that motion.
Oh, am I still, yeah, sorry, sorry, apologize. 6-
I'll second the motion.
6A, 1 to 2.
I'll second the motion. Mr. Strobel had the motion.
All right. Any, any concerns, any, any concerns about the, the strength coach, coach position? We were, we were given a presentation by Ms. Schmidt in the, and Mr. Miller in the Extracurricular Activities Committee, back when we still had committee meetings. And so, and I know it was discussed then, but if anybody feels like they have any questions on that? Yes, no? Okay, so we can go ahead and vote on, vote on 6A.
1 to 2?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. I don't have to do B. Scott anymore. Jay Leoni? We've been doing it the whole time. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, now we'll move on to 7A, 1, which is where I wanted to be. Do we have a motion for those? I'll make that motion if I have a second. Mr. Miller?
Yes, second.
Lewis first. Ms. Olson?
Yeah.
Right, and Mr. Miller, second, okay?
Now, let me just say, these are, these policies are skipping a couple steps for, for reasons related to COVID-19 and being out, out of, being, not being able to be at school or be in the buildings. I will ask Mr. Hurley, if he, if, if he's on the call, I think he is, to just give like the 50 cent tour of what these are related to, just because they're new ads? Maybe? I'll take anyone from the, from the administration, if, if Mr. Hurley isn't around.
Yeah, I think he's still muted.
Okay.
The three, the three policies that you indicated have to do, they skipped some readings because of the COVID-19, and as pursuant the, the, with the, with the CARES law, it allows for the board to skip a couple of the processes to approve one of the motions. The first one has to do with attendance at meetings, beginning of all of our public meetings that we've been having. The board had to vote on suspending the policy, so there's provisions in that 711, so that the board will not have to vote to suspend that policy any longer. Policy 2 has to do with the family medical leave, as said, provisions of the CARES Act. So that was amended to reflect the change there, and the same is, is, holds true for policy 326.
And that's, that's fiscal compliance with like Title I and things like that?
Correct, with some of our federal funding and our titles.
Okay, but that, I just wanted the board to be aware that the, we, we do have the, we do have the leniency from the government to skip some of our, we can make these changes without the, the traditional first reading, second reading, so we can be compliant with these new, these new laws that are on the books. And that's why they're being, it's being brought to us without the other steps in the process. I just wanted the board to understand that. Any, any of the board have any questions about the changes that are going to be made? Okay, if, if we have no questions from the board, then we can go ahead and vote on that.
Okay, this is 7A, 1, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
And Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right, seven yeses.
All right, in the home stretch. All right, so old business, A, 1 and 2, do I have a motion for those?
I'll make the motion for 8, 1 and 2 to be approved.
Mr. Strobel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Albright?
Who was that? Who's the second?
It's Mrs. Albright.
Oh, Ms. Albright, okay, let me find your name. Thank you.
Just saying, Bucky, I knew, I knew it was Mrs. Albright.
Exactly.
I actually didn't. It didn't sound like her, sorry, sorry.
All right, no, so it's, it's just, it's the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, so if, if we have no, no comments from the board, we can go ahead and vote?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right, seven yeses.
All right, and moving on to new business, the added item. All right. Do I have a motion for A, 9A, 1, for, to authorize the administration, solicitor, and consultants to explore the restructuring of our debt series, I'm sorry, from 2017, General Obligation Bond Series A? And go ahead, Mr. Subers, let me know what I forgot.
That sounded pretty good.
Do I have a motion for that?
They're moved.
Right, I'm sorry, who was that? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, do I have a second?
I'll give you a sec. Oh, okay, sorry. Did I, who was the second?
Me.
Ms. Leoni?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
That's okay. If you look at the screen, like, a little yellow box appears around people when they're talking. I can tell who's talking.
Don't confuse him, Julia.
All right, so, so I know we had this discussion, like, briefly at the beginning when we were going to talk about adding this, so if any of the board wants to ask a couple more questions of the administration about this authorization that we're going to vote on, I would ask them now.
My, my only question, I just want to make sure I clarified. Kathleen, you answered my email, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that at the, at the end of this, there's no, we're not, we're not kicking this down the pike, we're just extending it over a period of time, and at the end, we have a zero balance? We're paying principal and interest all the way through?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I, I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're doing this instead of digging into the capital reserve to make this payment, right?
Again, correct.
Good.
Yeah, I, I, I'm very glad that you, we kept looking for more solutions other than digging into the capital fund to make this payment. So, I, I think fiscally, it's more, I know it does add a little bit to the amount of interest that we're paying over the course of 10 years, but I, I think right now, our current concern monetarily is what the next two years specifically are going to look, look like. And, you know, I know that's short-term thinking, but my understanding from what we're hearing is that whatever fallout financially at the state and federal level, it could take as much as two years to recover from, and then we'll have to see where we are there, but these next two years are not going to be, not going to be easy at the, at the school district level. Do any of the other board members have questions for Ms. Haynes or Dr. Cooper on, on this authorization that we're going to vote on?
We also have Lou Verdelli, he's on the call here, so if you do any-
Oh, great.
So if you do have any technical questions, he's here.
Great, thank you so much for, for being here, sir.
You're, you're welcome. And I would, I would just mention that the plan is, if you were to authorize this, we would work with Mr. Subers' office to prepare the normal parameters resolution that you passed when we've done refinancings in the past, and we would have that on your agenda for the May 11th meeting.
Okay. Any questions at this time from the board before we vote? Okay, Mr. Scott?
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Seven yeses, 9A.
Thank you, sir. And now it's time, do you have any presentations by the public on any issues? Mr. Matts will let me know if there are any raised hands?
There are no raised hands at this time.
All right. Again, thank you to all the parents and the teachers that are showing an incredible amount of patience and, and grace in this, in this time period. It's hard for everyone, but I think it's, you know, it's, the teachers are doing their best to not make it hard on the, on the parents and students, and it's, it's appreciated more than you guys will ever know. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll motion it. Tanya Bell?
Yeah, do you have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.